Okay, we're gonna keep going. It is 6:30 and I am calling us to order. We have a full dais. And tonight, I'm gonna ask two gentlemen to step forward and I'm gonna talk about them. Case Benoit, come on up, and Josiah Reese. So you guys have to stand up here and turn around and face the audience while I talk about you. So Case is a wide receiver and linebacker for the football team, and Josiah is quarterback and wide receiver for the football team. They're both in 4th grade, and the good news is they both like math, which makes me very, very happy. Josiah also likes science, and Case is also a fan of social studies, 'cause it's fun to study random people. So I think that's great. So, these gentlemen are gonna turn around, and if you would all please rise, we will say the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag.
(Crosstalk) 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 If you'll please remain standing, our chaplain Cliff Sparks will be giving us the indication tonight.
Psalm 133 says in part, "Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity, for there the Lord commanded a blessing even life forevermore." Let us pray. Father God, we gladly invite your presence here amongst us. We rejoice in good government. We thank you for the blessings you've put upon us. We thank you for the rain, and we thank you that it quit long enough for us to get here Lord, according to your word, let these who are your servants of willing, willingly serving your people with good government be blessed. Let your blessings be upon this community. Lord, we need your help. There are families that need your peace. There are roads that need safety that you can bring. Lord, there are folks that need health. We ask that these things be done, that you're our provider, that you provide these things, and that you give these folks here that are serving, and all those that work with them, your wisdom from your Holy Spirit that you said you'd give if we asked. And Lord, we thank you for it. And Lord, we just ask that all these things be done to give you glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Sparks. Our chaplains do such a great job. Let's give our chaplains a round of applause. Okay, moving on to presentations. The first presentation is my mayor's report. We can go...oh, wait, well, we can't. I got stuff here. If you signed up to speak, and counsel, you all have a red ribbon at your desk, and I want to make you aware of the fact that October 23rd through the 31st is the National Red Ribbon Campaign. It encourages citizens to participate in drug prevention and education. So that's why you have a ribbon at your place, and I would just wanna encourage everybody to participate in Red Ribbon Week. So with that, we can go to the next page, which shows you some things I did between September 17th and the 28th. The upper left-hand corner is my true confession. I actually left Bastrop County. I went with a group of girlfriends, and we went to Colorado. It's a group of people that I've known for about 10 years, and we're called the Close Knit Sisters, and I'm nerdy enough that I knit. And we usually do some type of a mission project, and it was great to spend some time outside of Bastrop, but it was also wonderful to come home. During that time period, we also had our first open house. It was very successful, and we had quite a few people participate. If you missed Oz the Musical, you really missed out. There were some great kids. I know Collins' kids were in the play, and it's just wonderful to see the folks that are involved in our community theater. The middle of the picture, middle of the slide shows one of our building Bastrop weekly meetings. We had our eighth meeting last week, and just continue to try to educate everybody and answer anybody's questions regarding our building Bastrop. On the upper right-hand corner, you'll see Bits and Pieces reopening. That was the ribbon cutting, and Bits and Pieces is one of the fundraising arms of the Family Crisis Center. And we'll have additional discussion about the Family Crisis Center later today. That's why I am wearing purple, and Mayor Protem is wearing purple. We're doing that for Domestic Violence Prevention Month of October. We had two new folks join us. Mike Camerlander, who's here tonight and will be making a presentation a little bit later, is the new executive director of our Economic Development Corporation. We're thrilled to have Mike on board. And Susan Smith is the new president of Visit Bastrop, our destination marketing organization. So we had a reception for both of them. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, we went, several of us went to the Best of Bastrop County event, and our own council member Rogers was one of the winners, and Colengara was also one of our winners. So let's have a round of applause for these folks. The other picture of Best of Bastrop County is Andy Sevilla and I, because we were both at the event, and we appreciate the advertiser sponsoring and taking care of that event. If you go to the next slide, you'll see these are the things that I did from the last picture through this council meeting on the 9th. Those are the things that you'll see pictures of at our next council meeting. Been kinda busy, had a couple of the ribbon cuttings, and the National Night Out was a huge success, and some of you may have seen, there were several pictures in the advertiser this week. And it was really a great event, and it was nice that so many of us were able to participate in that. If you go to the next slide, it tells you what I'm gonna be doing between tonight and our next city council meeting. The Texas Municipal League is an organization that represents over 1,200 cities in the state of Texas, and it is a great conference to go to, and the best lessons to learn are when someone else has made a mistake and figured out how to do it right, and when you can benefit from that. We all go to try to learn how, the things that we can do to help Bastrop run smoother. On Monday is our monthly BEDC meeting, Mike Camerlander, that will be, I guess, his second meeting. He started that morning, and then we made him run a meeting that night, so he was, he hit the ground running for sure. On October 18th, it's gonna be a busy day. We will have, that morning, we'll have our weekly Building Bastrop meeting. That afternoon, around lunch, we'll have our Family Crisis Centers having their women's luncheon. Council meeting will be on the 23rd, but the Bastrop, Building Bastrop Public Workshop, if you go to the next slide, there is a reminder to let everybody know, on Thursday, October 18th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the convention center, will be our second open house. This one's gonna be about talking about downtown's DNA. At our last Building Bastrop open house, we had several stations, and people were able to ask a lot of questions. Some of the feedback that we got was, "I don't know enough about it to ask some questions, so I'd like somebody to make a presentation." So at this meeting, there will be a presentation, there will also be ample opportunity to ask questions. So please mark that down on your calendar and invite your friends. And then we have another announcement. Our city attorney was the ICMA honorary member for 2018, and it is an award that is not given every year, it's only given on special years for special people. ICMA is the International City Manager Association. You have to get nominated and get all kinds of references, and Alan Borquez was the winner, and we wanna recognize him for that. We are really lucky to have Alan's advice, and we appreciate so much him being a part of our team, so congratulations.
(Crosstalk)
No. No, Councilmember Jones's mic was off for a reason. She said Alan could raise his rates, and we're all going, "No, no, we paid for the good stuff, we expect him to do the good stuff." We appreciate that. Okay, counsel, that's all I have, and with that, Councilmember Jones, do you have anything to share?
Well, Bastrop won the football game this last Friday. Cedar Creek beat Brennan, which is number one, but Bastrop beat Cedar Creek, so we have kind of a winner county going on right now. But I'm really, really proud of these guys, and personally, I believe a huge reason that our team is doing so well this year is we have dozens of parents who are volunteering at the school, feeding these kids home-cooked meals on the spot, lunch, breakfast, and dinner at different times during the week. They get a lot of support, we really appreciate them. And of course, there's several guys on the team that are just super talented, so it's a lot of fun to watch. So if you haven't gone to any Bastrop Bear Games, there's one here this Friday night, next Friday night, and it's just a lot of fun.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Ennis?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Just a few things. I was, on Thursday the 27th, I joined in the welcome reception for Susan Smith and Mike Camerlander. And then on Tuesday, last Tuesday, on the 2nd, was honored to participate with our police department during the National Night Out. Assistant Chief Nagy was an excellent guide for Reverend Bob Long, Greg Holder, and myself as we traveled to some of the block parties that were, that were set up that evening. Thanks to Officer McIntyre and the folks that organized and attended the block parties. It was a well-turned-out event at several of those locations. On Wednesday, we attended the chamber luncheon that recognized our outstanding county-wide first responders, of which our police chief represented well, the city police department. And then on Thursday the 4th, I attended our regularly scheduled Parks Board meeting as the council liaison, spirited discussion on several issues, including an initiative on certifying Bastrop as an official bird city, which, come to find out, has a lot of economic benefits to our community, so we'll keep following that. We talked about park policy recommendations from this engaged group, and then potential revenue generators. And this group is planning a workshop to discuss all of these items in more detail, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about the National Night Out. That was a really cool event. It's the first time I ever done it, and first time I ever got to ride in a fire truck. Thank you, Chief. So, and it was really neat going to all the neighborhoods and seeing all the people, and it was really a nice thing. The second thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I'm sure like everybody on the council, our hearts going out with everyone from the accident on 95, so I wanted to keep those in our hearts and our minds.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Briefly, I just want to say thank you to Mayor, City Manager, council, and staff. My wife just recently had surgery, and I've been kinda on lockdown for a few weeks here. But up and rolling again, she's getting better. Thank you.
We're glad she's getting better, and we're really glad that she had you to help take care of her. That's great. City Manager, do you have anything to report tonight?
Yes, ma'am. We had a board and commission orientation scheduled for the first Thursday in October that we had to cancel and reschedule just due to some other pressing engagements, and I wanted to let everyone know that that has been rescheduled for January 24th of 2019. That's gonna be the 4th Thursday of January, so if you're on a board and commission, please mark that on your calendar, and we will have the orientation at that time.
Thank you, City Manager, and my understanding is though it'll be board and commission orientation and also some ethics training.
That will be a part of the board and commission orientation. The ordinance requires us to train on ethics, and we'll use that as a great opportunity to do so.
Great, okay. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, we're on item 4D, a proclamation of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I have a proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over 4 million Americans each year, and whereas 1 in 3 Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, and whereas children that grow up in a violent home are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of Bastrop to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. I would like to recognize Pastor Bernie Jackson, who many of you know works for the Family Crisis Center. If you'd like to come forward and share any information about the month, and I'll give you this proclamation.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. Counsel, thank you for having me. October 18th is Go Purple Day, so we're asking everyone to go purple, and take pictures, and let's just flood Facebook and social media saying that Bastrop is a city that is working together to eliminate domestic and sexual violence in our community. I'm gonna thank the Mayor Protem for getting his shirt. He promised me he would, and he did. Also, I'm gonna thank the city, and now the county, and the school district has joined us in going purple. They have lights on their buildings at night, the city did it last year, and so they've come on board, and a couple of other businesses in town have also. They also have, if you, I think, look outside, they're doing a purple patch, pumpkin patch, that symbolizes that we are fighting domestic violence in the city of Bastrop. We have one request that we wanted to ask the city of Bastrop tonight, and that is to join us in this that I'm going to read now real quickly. Victims' trepidation about telling their story symbolizes the victimization of many survivors across the country. That terror resonates with those of us who work on the front line supporting and advocating for survivors. It takes incredible courage for victims to come forward, and we stand in solidarity with them. As a society, supporting and believing survivors encourages healing for individuals. It holds perpetrators accountable, and it promotes justice in general. The sexual assault and physical abuse of many women, men, and children have endured, that have endured, it's deeply rooted in power and control. So often Texans carry this trauma of abuse silently. The level of under-reporting is profound. All of us must continue to encourage survivors to tell their story. We must acknowledge their pain and fear. We must provide safe platforms so that their voices can be heard, and the silence that they've been put into because of this, that has been taken from them, can be restored. What we're asking is if you will stand with us, and let's provide a society that listens to them, that will hear their stories. Help us propel a true cultural change in our city, our county, and our country's approach to violence against women, and introduce greater support and solutions for survivors. Please join the Family Crisis Center during Domestic Violence Awareness Month this October and beyond to ensure that victims are heard, justice prevails, and fundamental changes can take place. That's what we're asking you all to do for us, because one of the cases that I heard this afternoon was so profound and hurtful to me, that I stand here tonight asking if you will please, let's join hands and see if we can make a change. I can't go into the case, but it involved a 2-year-old, and this should not, it just should not be happening in our society. And so we're asking that you all will continue to partner with us. We also recognize our law enforcement in the city of Bastrop and Bastrop County, and our partnership in helping eliminate domestic violence. Thank you for the proclamation and the time, Mayor. I appreciate being able to have this time before you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson, for everything that you do personally, and for everything that the Family Crisis Center does for our community. Thank you.
We're gonna do that.
Counsel, why don't we all stand up and stand behind her, 'cause we are definitely, I know, standing together on this. Okay, we're moving on to the next page. We're on item 5A, Work Session and Briefings. Discuss Warren Central Texas and the Capital Area Council of Governments' transition from Code Red to Everbridge. Chief Alkell?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council, city manager. Towards the latter part of last month, you should have received some email notifications from the regional network system regarding Warren Central Texas, from the Capital Area Council of Governments, which is composed, as we know, of 10 counties in our, in our area. And what the registration was doing was verifying what was taking place, as far as what registration you had, what addresses you had, and what manner of communication that you would prefer to be engaged with. What took place was unbeknownst to, or behind the scenes, was Code Red used to be the vendor that was the platform that we use for regional notification. And for various reasons, the COG decided to change from going from Code Red to a new vendor called Everbridge. For the end user, there's no real change on what takes place, but for the people that utilize the system, it's a much more robust and resilient system, and it's much more easier for users, for us to launch messages and to take care of what we need to take care of. So we view this as being a very positive change for the users and overall for our community. So when we go to register, if we haven't, I wanna use this for two things. Number one is let everybody know that if you didn't get a chance to go and confirm your address, and you are registered in Warren Central Texas, then you can go back and do that, and if you hadn't, this would be an opportunity, a great opportunity to do so. We'll go to the website, which is WarrenCentralTexas.org, and you'll go, it should look like this. There's three easy steps that we do. We're gonna register. After you register, you're gonna customize your alerts, so you actually get the control what type of weather warnings that you wanna receive for what address is, and then the step 3 is to stay informed or monitor whichever platform or platforms you wanna be contacted. So when you go to the website, you'll see where it says Get Alerts. When you click on there, within about 7 to 10 seconds, you'll be automatically directed to the right, to the right website. It'll take you there, and you'll click where it says Create an Account. Once you get to the Create an Account, you'll fill out your username, your information, you'll come, select a password, a security question, so you can reset your password in the event that you forget what it is, and then what your registration email will be. Step 2 is gonna be to customize what manner you wanna be contacted with, whether it would be by a telephone call, by a text message, or by an email. And then, like we said, the last one would be to stay informed, and monitor your telephone or your text message or email, however you want to put in for there. The wonderful thing about this, like I said, is that the platform change doesn't affect the end user, but registering for this gives us the ability for you to be, get advance warning, or notice for tornado warnings, flash floods, or public safety matters, so in the event that we have some type of law enforcement incident, and we want people to shelter in place or stay, we have the ability to draw a polygon in the area that's affected, so we don't have to launch an entire countywide message unless doing so is appropriate. And we can keep people informed for not only natural disasters, but any item of public safety concern that takes place. So we really stress to, if you have been registered, go in there and clean up your registration to make sure that you have the right contact information, and if you haven't, go into, go into Warren Central Texas and registering could save your life or the life of your family. I'm available for any questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you, Chief. I think you implied this, but I just wanna double check. You don't have to live in Texas to register for this, so if folks have elderly parents or they got kids they'd mind, you, anybody can register. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And so what I've done is I'm registered for Bastrop, I'm registered for my residence, and I also registered where my parents were, so that I don't live in Bastrop County, so that if an event takes place, I get notified, and I know that maybe I need to get ahold of my parents and give them the heads up in case they weren't following. So it's absolutely a wonderful thing that if you're out of state, you can still register. Now, you may not get certain notifications for the state of Colorado. Warren Central Texas won't take care of it. It's, it's, it's limited to the 10-county region here, but out of state can monitor anything in our 10-county area.
Terrific. I just think it's a really, sometimes when something bad's going on, the phone lines get jammed, and that's a way that, if you've got a loved one in Bastrop County, you can know what's going on.
Absolutely, yeah.
Counsel, do you have any other questions for Chief Alkell?
Thank you for your time.
Great job. Thank you very much. Please, everybody, get, get signed up. We're now on item 5B, Discuss Revisions to the City's Procurement Policy Regarding Future Fleet Acquisitions. City Manager?
Mayor and council, at the last city council, we talked about a challenge we had with a fleet purchase, and I wanted to bring back the procurement policy that addresses future fleet acquisitions, and if I can get whoever's in charge of the slides to advance it one, that would be awesome. So essentially, what will happen is after you adopt the budget, the finance department will create a fleet appropriation list, and that will occur at the beginning of every fiscal year, and based on the equipment and the vehicles that are included on the list, they will each be signed a unit number, and at that point, the list will be distributed to each department that has vehicles and equipment on the list. Each department will complete and submit a purchasing summary to the finance department. And for those that aren't familiar with that vernacular, essentially what that is, is the department will go and participate on the State Buy Board, which is a hosted site that the state of Texas manages, that allows cities to purchase vehicles and equipment legally by going to this website. And what that does is let us participate and get the benefit of volume buying that we would not be able to do as small as we are. So once they have identified the specific vehicle or piece of equipment that they're ordering, all of the documentation will then be submitted with that purchasing summary, which will include the unit number as close to October 1st as possible. The purchasing summary will be checked against the fleet appropriation list, reviewed for accuracy and completeness, and once the finance department has gathered all of the summaries, verified that the list is complete, then it will come to me for approval. Upon approval, the finance department will create a purchase order. What that's going to do is encumber the money so that it is not spent twice, and that the equipment that has been authorized is actually what's being purchased. And the approved purchase orders will then be sent to the department so that they can execute the purchase order attached to the purchase summary for what they have requested. And that process has a myriad of checks and balances. As you raised the question, Mayor, it's not tied to a specific person, but it's tied to departments and tasks with multiple levels of checks and balances, so we're satisfied that we can ensure the process works. This policy that is in your packet is dated effective October 1st, even though I don't make policy decisions, I want you to appreciate how serious we are in making this happen. So operationally, this... this is instituted, and I'm seeking feedback to ensure that y'all are confident that this resolves any outstanding issues. And these policies will be on your next council agenda for approval. The last time the purchasing policies were updated was in 2014. So with that, Mayor, I am happy to receive any feedback that any of you may have.
So just for the ease of people at home, or if you're in the audience looking at the packet, everything that's on that slide, which is not in the packet, is actually pulled off of Page 20 of 137, and it is Page 4 of the purchasing policy. When I compared this to what was approved back in 2014, there wasn't even a fleet purchase section.
That is correct.
So I know that we've updated it for that, but to your point that it hasn't been reviewed since 2014, I think it's important for Counsel, I'm sure that you guys all did read the whole purchasing policy, because we're responsible for setting that policy. And then the nuts and bolts, and who signs when, and what the form looks like, that's certainly for the City Manager to take care of. The way I view this, we have to make sure that from a policy standpoint, we're giving the City Manager the right tools that they can then match up with operations and procedures to make sure that what we think is happening is indeed what's actually happening.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would invite Counsel, if you haven't already, to the City Manager's point, I believe this will be an item for consideration on October 23rd. Is that the right date? Yeah, October 23rd. And if you have any updates or any changes that perhaps you don't have this evening, I know she would appreciate getting that prior to the packet going out so that not only Counsel, but the public can see what we intend to vote on on October 23rd. So sorry for that, kind of filling in some of the blanks, but Counsel, do you have any recommendations or changes or comments that you want to share with the City Manager? Counselmember Jones says no. Anybody? Counselmember Rogers?
Well, I wanted to thank the City Manager for taking the situation seriously. And I love the way you've added this, because I think it will check all the boxes for us in the future. And since we are, since it hasn't been updated since 2014, and I know we updated this because of a situation, it might be wise just to look through all the rest of the pages, see if any of it, just to make sure it's all, don't have to go back the next month and update something else. So might as well look through all of them just to see if there's anything else that needs tweaking before we send it off.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. Did you have anything you wanted to make adjustments to tonight for her?
Yes, what I was concerned about was answered.
I was mainly concerned about what was answered, because that was my focus now, but then I'll look at the rest of it.
Perfect. Mayor Protem Nelson, were you gonna?
Yeah, I read through the policy and the policy recommendations, and having some experience with procurement practices, I'd really appreciate the fleet section in there. I think it's imperative we put that in, not only because of the previous issue that was discussed, but for ongoing, as we continue to grow and meet the challenges before. So I really appreciate the effort on this.
One thing that I noticed when I looked at the November, November, the September 23rd, 2014 agenda was that it was paired with the financial investment policy. And I think it would be a good idea if we looked at it every year. If there's a change, we can make a change, and if not, and that way, we won't go five years with nobody having looked at it. So that's one suggestion I'd like to make.
I think that is a great idea, Mayor, and that gives us an opportunity to dust it off as well operationally and just double-check it. So I will ask Tracy Waldron to add that to the list of things y'all consider with the budget adoption.
I think Mayor Protem Nelson makes a good point. Things change, and we're growing, and we may end up with different areas that we don't realize now need to be adjusted, and we shouldn't be doing it after the fact. I'd like to see us do it proactive. Counselmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I read through from one end to the other, and my question is, how does this compare with the existing, was it just the addition of the fleet purchase section, or have there been some other changes made in it?
Counselmember, I read the purchasing policy, and it complies with state law. It also complies with your financial policy. In your financial policy, it sets the actual signature authorities of staff, so that is accurately reflected in the guidelines. I will just, for a gut check, send them to the City Attorney and let him look at them as well. But at this point in time, in reading them, it's appropriate. I think the fleet addition certainly adds some clarity to ensure we've got the appropriate checks and balances, but just as a double check, I'll send them to Allen.
Great. I appreciate all the work.
Thank you, Counselmember Ennis. So City Manager, I think Counsel's made the commitment to you that we'll send you any revisions that we find. We'll know that by the time we're voting on it on October 23rd, when we see it in the packet, that Allen will be fine with it. We want to make sure that we're following the law, and then we'll consider this for voting on October 23rd. Is that, City Manager, is that, did you get what you needed, Al? Counselmember Ennis?
Does the City Attorney think that he can pass on this before we vote on it? Thank you.
That was very polite of you. Thanks, Counselmember Ennis. I was just saying, he had to, so that was nice to ask. Okay, we don't have any staff and board reports, so we are at Citizens Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for Citizen Comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we are done with Citizen Comments. We are moving to the Consent Agenda. Is there any item that needs to be polled from the Consent Agenda?
I originally asked for Item 8D to be polled from the Consent Agenda.
Item 8D, is there any other item that needs to be polled, Counsel? From the public, is there anyone that wishes to have a Consent Agenda item polled? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will read Items 8A, B, and C, we will then consider the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Consider Action, 8A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Ordinance from the September 25th, 2018 meeting. Item 8B, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2018-26 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Fee Schedule, Article A, 13.02, Water and Wastewater Rates and Charges, repealing conflicting provisions, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Item 8C, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2018-27 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances related to Chapter 12, titled Traffic and Vehicles, Article 12.05, titled Speed Limits, adding Section 12.05.010, titled 25 mph Speed Zones, providing for the provision that establishes a speed limit of 25 miles per hour in the 1700 block of Farm Street, the 1700 block of Spring Street, and the 1,1100 block of CP Johnson Lane, and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict herewith as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, enactment effective date, repealer, severability, and proper notice and meaning. This concludes the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, if anyone has a motion?
Move to approve.
A second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Counselmember Jones. Is there any further discussion on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Counselmember Jones?
Yes.
Counselmember Ennis?
Yes.
Counselmember Rogers?
Yes.
Counselmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes unanimously. We're now on Item 8D, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2018-28 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for the fiscal year 2018 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. Counselmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. I had asked for this to be polled only to come off of the Consent Agenda, because I wanted to comment and thank the City Attorney, I mean, the City Manager for taking in all my questions and concern on the subject and bringing all the, you know, making everything clear. So I wanted to be able to get the chance to thank her for that and clearing it all up and bringing the fleet into the policy. So I just wanted to give that chance to let her know that I appreciate her taking it seriously and wanted the public to know we were watching.
Thank you, Counselmember Rogers. Is there any other comments? Seeing none, is there any? I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Counselmember Rogers?
Yes.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counselmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Counselmember Peterson?
Yes.
Counselmember Jones?
Yes.
Counselmember Ennis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to the items for individual consideration. We're on Item 9A. Before I read the item, Counsel, you had two documents, two staple documents in front of you this evening. Has everyone had an opportunity to review this? Because we can take a five-minute recess and let you read through it before Ms. Bills presents. Is everybody okay, or you want to see the presentation?
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Jones, are you all right as well?
I would like to have five minutes.
Okay, we're gonna, we are gonna, it's 7:12. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. We're gonna sit right here and read through the information. Recession. Ms. Bills, make sure you, because, just so the audience understands, there's a lot of papers here. We're seeing them for the very first time, so make sure we know which project you're talking about first.
So we're, tonight you have two different exemption applications in front of you, and they're both for single-family projects. The first one is for 2016 Hill Street, and we've got kind of a larger kind of location map to see where that is. It's a vacant lot currently on facing Hill Street.
Counsel, if you're looking at your packets, the property owner is Darlene Stubbs.
And there's a large undeveloped area in the middle. This would be kind of that example of our, the farm lots that got built out around the edges in the middle, didn't get developed. And the only access to that middle lot is this little stub over here.
Is that a right-of-way, a street right-of-way?
No, it's the access that this property owner has to his property, so.
I wondered if they were land-locked, so they, literally, it's a flag lot?
It's a little tiny flag lot, yeah.
Okay.
And so the property in question did have a house on it up until a couple of years ago, and it was demoted for, I think, it wasn't of any use anymore. The lot does kind of have an interesting, there's an electric line that bisects the property, so any development has to be kept away from that electric line, which is another interesting feature of this lot. But the applicant has turned in their engineering study that was required, and they're proposing to do 4,050 square feet of impervious cover, which includes a single-family house, a detached garage accessory structure, and a driveway. This entire site is a little over a third of an acre, which is over 14,853 square feet in size, so that comes to 27.3% impervious cover for the entire site. That's going to have a solid surface on it. The water won't go through. So when the engineer looked at the increased runoff, there will be an additional .6 CFS in a 100-year storm event. And so looking at the natural drainage patterns for this area, everything in this area currently on the side of the street actually drains through this, and there's a 24-inch storm drain on Pecan Street that it, so it sheet flows across this lot. And this is how the drainage already is flowing across this lot, and they're going to have an additional .6 after the property is developed of drainage that will continue to sheet flow across that lot to that.
So is there an area inlet, or does it go all the way to this, how's it getting in the system?
There is an area inlet, according to Mr. Jobe. So is there any questions on this? And I also have our engineer to answer any questions on the drainage side that I may not be able to answer.
But just remind the audience and Counsel that an SF7 means a 7,000 square foot is what that lot would need to be. So at 14,000, this is twice the size that it would need to be, correct?
Yes.
So that's why the house is such a small percentage of the overall lot, because it's really a rather large lot for an SF7 zoning.
Yes. Yeah, the lots in this area tend to be fairly deep.
Is the .6 zero increase in CFS, is that negligible, or is that just the engineer's statement?
That's the engineer's statement, and our engineer can back that up.
When we're trying to determine this, we would put our heads together and talk about where this is, and what's zero, and what's beyond zero, and what's less. We consider that to be negligible, but we don't feed that to the applicant. We let the applicant go back to their engineer, do their study, and see what they come back with. And if they come back with something reasonable, like we feel this is, then we discuss that again, then we determine that either it's acceptable or it's not. We consider that amount to be negligible.
Is that a negligible amount to say the property south, I guess this is south, on your drawing there, to the property directly south of that?
Well, I would have to consider it would be, but I don't know, because I don't know what that other property is, in the study, is actually sheet flowing off the property.
Let me help with this. The .6 increase is coming off of the black line that's drawn around the lot, and so that .6 has to go completely across that open field before it gets to the area inlet. So there's a good portion of it that may not ever make it to the area inlet. But it's more than what was coming off of that lot before, but since the, and Jerry, I think that area inlet is at the back of the lot, inside the flag lot. So it would be, even if it made it across that open field, it would be captured by the area inlet before it would be into someone else's lot.
Basically, where I'm going is, what is that, 2014? How is that gonna, are we assured that it's all gonna go straight out the back of that property into the big, into the big lot, or is it gonna cross the next, that oh?
Going sideways.
Right now, the drainage does flow naturally into that field and across.
What he's saying is he wants to make, if you go to the other, to the topo?
There.
What he's saying is they're not going, see, 2014 is right next to them. It may be naturally draining from Hill Street back, but they're not going to build it and now be extending water onto 2014 that's not there at all. I think that's what he's asking.
Well, they shouldn't be, and we can sort of make sure that this heads in that direction. There is no reason for them to be building it up and pointing it back to the other property.
I think Counselmember Ennis is just making sure we're protecting everybody.
That's been our concern, and that's where I'm going with this.
I understand that. The increase is probably less than 2%. So it's a very negligible amount, and so it's just, we also go on what their engineer recommends, and we're trusting that his stamp speaks that authority. He did the study, so he says this is what's flowing, and we assume that's right.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out it was her stamp that we keep going. Counselmember Ennis, are you?
I guess I'm, I guess I'm satisfied.
I guess I'm satisfied.
Counselmember Jones?
So we increased that drainage across the street, but the water's still flowing over Hill Street into those houses that flood across that field?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
So didn't we, isn't that one of our goals, is to deepen that, isn't that the drainage pond right there, across the street?
No, across the street here, there's a drainage structure there that the water flows to.
Right, so.
Eventually gets to.
Right, so that's one of our projects, is to deepen that, right?
Yes.
So I see all the arrows still going that way. When all that stuff floods along that roadway there, it seems like it would be going the other way, but unless there's a, are you saying there's a grate now in that field that's going to drain back, drain all that off? Is that what's gonna happen? I just want you to talk about that a little bit, because there's an issue.
I just want you to talk about that a little bit, because there's an issue with flooding
along there.
Yes. So that large empty field in the rear, there's actually a 66-inch storm sewer that runs through down to Water Street and all the way out to Piney Creek. It's also connected to the detention pond there. And, and what you, what you were talking about, the flood event that happened there would be fixed when the pond is actually deepened. And that happened to be a much larger storm, and it was, Piney Creek was, the elevation of Piney Creek was so high that the inlets actually couldn't take in any water, which is why they had the flooding in that area in 2016.
And so, deepening the pond would have provided relief for that?
Correct.
The, the water that's going to the pond is upstream of this, but to your point, when it all backs up, this would now be another .6, given the exact same storm.
Correct.
And I think that was your point.
Yes. So is that, there's a new drain that goes back there that you're saying that's gonna come back underneath to that pond, because it's gonna be deepened?
It, it is not new. It is just, it was overwhelmed at that day, but not by the water that's flowing off of these lots. That happened farther upstream, north of 95, if that makes any sense. Seventy acres in Piney Ridge drains right across there, and that's what overwhelmed the pond, which is what caused the flooding.
So we believe that that's gonna be alleviated by what we're, we're doing over there, because I just feel like if I get a question, I want to know that we feel pretty confident.
We're deepening the pond.
Why don't you give some particulars about the changes to the pond, because it's spectacular when you talk about it and acknowledge that FEMA has approved the design, and as soon as it's approved, they'll help pay for the improvements. But describe the pond, so people appreciate what's going to change.
So the pond is currently built for a 10-year storm, which is a much less significant rain than the 100-year storm. It's gonna be designed to the 100-year storm, which can accommodate a much quicker, faster rainfall rate. So essentially, the pond that you see to the right of Hill Street, east of Hill Street, will actually deepen about 23 feet. So it'll be 23 feet deeper, which will allow it to contain that water and allow the water in this area to run off before it's pumped into the existing storm sewer.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted you to talk about.
Okay, so I have another question. I thought you told me there was an area inlet at the back of a lot, and I'm now busted out my glasses, and it says there's an existing curb inlet, so it's on the front, it's on the Pecan Street.
I think that's a typo on the engineer's behalf. It's, the inlet is in that large field in the rear.
So, do you think that area inlet is at the back? Somebody get the pointer.
It is in this field here.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Everything that drains here, it makes its way back down Laurel Street, up Water, all the way to Piney Creek.
So, there may, will be a curb inlet? I don't remember very many curb inlets.
It's a graded inlet, actually.
Okay. But you said there's also an area drain at the back of those lots as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of the large 60-centimeter storm sewer. There are two of them that run down all the way to Piney Creek. One down Pecan, one down Main.
So that extra water coming off the property we're talking about is gonna go into an inlet in the middle of that big field?
Correct.
Great.
When is the pond gonna be started and/or finished?
We have the, as part of our capital improvement project, we have gotten FEMA approval. We just need to contact the engineers and bring it back for.
We, we visited with Langford, and BEFCO has got to finalize the design according to FEMA standard, and that's not a expedient process. I think Langford thought in the next 60 to 90 days, the first of 2019, if my memory is correct, once the design is submitted to FEMA, then they will authorize the project for construction, which we hope will happen sometime next year. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's a great question. We.
I don't think anybody heard her, because she didn't have a mic on.
The question is, what is the duration of the project? And my response is, that's a great question. You can appreciate digging a hole 23 feet deep. The challenge will be relocating the dirt that's excavated from the pond.
Yes.
And that is going to be on an as-needed basis, and when you don't know when the construction's gonna start, you don't necessarily know who needs it. So there are a number of variables to be determined. We have talked about in our drainage conversations, the need to get into regional detention, and we're going to use this pond to understand all of the opportunities that come with such a project, so that we can make some better informed decisions. But at this point in time, we don't have enough information to address that.
Yes.
Say, answer your question, Councilmember Jones, you okay? One procedural question I have is, this couldn't be an exception because it's increased from zero. Is that why it's an exemption?
Yes.
Yes. So the ordinance reads on anything, a no-impact project has to have no, no increased impervious cover, or increased intensity, and this would increase the impervious cover and intensity of this use.
Okay, so I'm assuming the fact that you brought it to us, then staff is comfortable that it's okay to proceed with this, but because it's 0.6 is more than zero, it has to come to council for an exemption?
Yes.
Council, does that help with your understanding? Do you have any other questions for Ms. Bills?
I do have a question. On that big empty lot in the middle that, you know, nobody's built on, what will happen if whoever owns that land decides to build something? Will that make that water just go everywhere else?
Potentially. So whoever builds, so that area is zoned for single-family residential, so currently, the only thing someone can do there is build one house, because they only have one access.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of, we've had, we have a couple of those in town, that they're kind of landlocked, that parcels, that they're, we're gonna have to find a creative use for those in the, in the future.
Well, because it's zoned that way, no one's gonna come in and try to make an apartment complex in the middle of it.
Yeah, they'll have to rezone before they could do that.
All right, thank you.
The only way it's not gonna be one house is if they do ask for rezoning, and they'd have to have a site plan and handle the drainage and everything else. So it would come back to us.
Yeah.
Anything, and actually, depending on where we are with one house, it may still come back to us.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
One of the concerns of staff in this council has been that we, our current code allows for, or at least the way they've been built in the north part of town, below-grade structures. Is that being dealt with in this?
Yes, the applicant already had their engineered floor foundation with the finished-floor elevation that was, that's higher than the road, which is, or six inches above the crown of the road is our requirement. So they, they have provided that, or they will provide that in their building application.
So they have a finished-floor elevation and an engineered foundation?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thanks.
Great questions, council.
I move to approve.
All right. Can we do these separately? Is that the right way to do this? Because I don't, I don't really have a resolution number, so are we making a motion to, there's only one resolution number, and there's two projects. So what's, make me legal.
You have to consider each item on its own merits, but you're correct. It's one resolution that memorializes approving, whether it's one or two.
Okay, so we can make a motion on 2016 Hill Street, and then talk about the other one and make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers?
Second.
I have a question, I, oh, I'm sorry. What if one is approved and one isn't?
Then the resolution that is approved only have one attachment to it, which is the approved application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers for 2016 Hill Street.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Are there any further questions for Ms. Bills? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, so the exemption is granted for 2016 Hill Street. Council, we're now moving to the second project. The information that you have in front of you, and it looks like these are properties on Wilson Street. Ms. Bills?
Yes, so these are three properties on the corner of Wilson and Mesquite. This was actually part of a plot that was approved in the mid-'90s, the North Main Edition plot. So these three lots have been plotted. The applicant, there has, there's never been any houses located at this site, and they're proposing to do three single-family houses, which is what they're zoned for in that location. Each, each structure would be 2,178 square feet of impervious cover for the house and the driveways. The lots are very close in size, but very little bit, from .28 acres up to .31 acres, and the impervious cover for those goes from a little over 16% to almost 18%. So these are fairly low-impervious-cover lots for this. And the increased runoff for all three lots together is .72 CFS. So the last one was for the one lot was .6. This is .72 for all three structures. The lots do drain to Wilson Street, and there's already an existing drainage channel at the curb. And the table is teeny-tiny, so I did blow it up for you, because I, I didn't want to have to find magnifying glasses for all of this. The, the channel holds up to 62.54 CFS, and that will drain, it drains north and then eventually to Piney Creek.
Would you say that again, drains north?
Yeah, drain, it does, the current drainage and the channel goes, I believe, north and then to Piney Creek, or maybe a little bit more north, Piney Creek that way. More this way to Piney Creek, is the natural grade.
Councilmember Ennis, do you have a question? He's thinking. Does anybody else have a question while Councilmember Ennis is thinking? Okay, I know I annoy y'all, but this application's not signed.
It was, it was digitally signed, and when I combined all of the, the applications into one for records, it deleted the signature. And the applicant is here to testify that he did digitally sign.
So you'd be willing to sign this? Okay, that's good. Just, you know, going through all of this, make sure we get it all done. Okay, and Jerry, we're using the current coefficients because we don't have any other coefficients to use, right?
That's right.
And we don't know what the new ones are gonna be yet, do we?
No, we don't.
Rock-hard place. Okay. Any other questions? The, the coefficients is something that you use in the drainage calculation, and they're using the current coefficients, because that's all that exists. But when the FEMA comes out with the new numbers, we expect those numbers to go up. But for right now, and honestly, what, what are the size of these lots? I didn't see that listed here. Oh, .28 acres, okay.
A little under a third of an acre.
Yeah, so again, what's the normal, if there is such a thing, for residential lots, what do we normally expect the impervious cover to be?
Around 40%.
I was gonna say, isn't it real close to 50? So just, just to put it in perspective for you, it's, it's not that it's a little house, it's that it's a really big lot for, for one house, comparative to what our ordinances would allow in an SF7.
Yes. Our SF7 is usually 7,000 square feet, and these are.
So if you think about a 2,000-square-foot house on a 7,000-square-foot lot, you're, it's a pretty good portion of a lot, and these lots are much bigger. And again, this is an exemption and not an exception, because it's a number bigger than zero, but staff is confident, and they do have an engineer's seal on this as well.
We do.
Are these directly across from the new subdivision?
So this is across from, it's the River Terrace subdivision, and it is a plat that was recorded in 1984, or '82.
Not Piney.
It's not Piney Creek. So this is, this is what, we call it a paper plat. It's there in name only, and at some point, someone, people have been looking to develop it, but they, there's no infrastructure put in, so they have to. This is why we require the infrastructure to be built or bonded now, because of situations like this.
Thank you.
Good question, Councilmember Ennis. Any other questions, council?
Yeah, I got a little bit confused. I apologize. Confirmed, the drainage, the drainage capacity on Wilson Street is adequate to handle this, this relatively small increase?
Yes, they can hold up to a 62 CFS, is the volume it can hold, and this is increasing that by .72.
Thank you. Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
I second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
So council, thank you very much for the unanimous vote. That means that Resolution 2018-103 will have two projects approved, and we appreciate the diligence of making sure that we are not adversely impacting the other neighbors in our community. Council, we're now moving on to item 9B. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-29 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, rezoning 1.95 acres of building block 62, east of Water Street, from Single Family 7 to Commercial 1, located at 303 and 305 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A and B, including a severability clause, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the October 23, 2018 consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Bills?
So this is a rezoning request, and from two adjoining parcel owners, so the parcels are actually owned by two different people. They've banded together to clean up the zoning for this block. The property immediately to the east and south of both lots are already zoned Commercial 1. So currently, these properties are zoned, SF7 are single-family zoning. The property across the street, there are a few houses in this area, and I think there's three houses down in this area. There's an existing house on this lot that is, needs to be demoed, and that's the intent of the new, new owner who's recently purchased this lot, to clean that, that side up. The other side has been vacant for quite a while. The future land use for this area is professional services, which does allow for a commercial-use zoning in an area, especially when it's in conjunction with industrial or a public use, which, when you look at the larger area for this site, this is the site in question, and Martin Luther King Jr. Street currently comes to Jasper, and that's kind of the back entrance into the county facility. Soon, the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation has plans to extend Technology Drive to connect to Martin Luther King, and on our thoroughfare plan, this is shown as a collector-level street that will connect all the way into and be the, the second entrance for the industrial park, and connect the Bastrop County facility back to 71. So in, in our code, we have several instances in which changes to the zoning map can be made. One is to correct an error, which is not the case in this. These were appropriately zoned at the time. To recognize a change, change or changing conditions, with the, with the connection of Technology Drive, there is gonna be a change in this area. You're gonna have more traffic along the street, which makes it a commercial use, an appropriate use for these lots. And then the change must be in accordance with our approved comprehensive plan, which professional service does allow for commercial uses, especially in conjunction with our industrial and public uses in that area. In compliance with the moratorium, a zoning case does not have any drainage effect and does not create any vesting rights, so there's no, this is an exempt case from the moratorium. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their meeting on September 27, and they voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the rezoning, and there were no comments from the public at the meeting. So the recommendation is to hold the public hearing, consider action to approve the request, and the applicants are here if you have any questions of them.
Ms. Bills, I would assume, since it's rezoning, that all of the surrounding property owners were notified?
They were, and we didn't receive, other than the property owner, one of the property owners who owns surrounding property, we didn't receive any other comments.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis? Councilmember Ennis?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Ennis. Wait a minute, we're getting out of order. I have to hold a public hearing. So I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No.
I am now officially closing the public hearing, so if there's no further discussion, I'm happy to...
I move to approve.
...entertain a motion from councilmember Ennis and a second from councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion on the item?
Yes, ma'am. I still have my reservations about the width of this street from Jasper down to 71, excuse me. The street is often narrow to be opened up for commercial use, and it's, it's almost too, too narrow to have a single family in there. So I'd like to put some verbiage somewhere to where we can consider widening that street.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, you said it's designated as a collector on the master transportation plan?
Which is a 60, 60-foot wide right-of-way in our transportation plan. Currently, the right-of-way width, the right-of-way width is 55.55 feet, so if the property owners have to plot, they will be required to dedicate half of that area on both sides, or if the city goes through a widening project in the future, we can, we'll have to purchase probably that, that property if, if they're not required to plot when they start developing.
So this rezoning is not approving a plat, and a plat is where we will catch that?
Yeah.
Is that...
Try, can you come to the podium, please? To ensure that we address councilmember Peterson's concern, there's drainage on both sides, and there's also some work that's going to be done clearly by TechStot with the service roads connecting and all of that. Do we have the ability to expand this road where it next down and makes the curve? Do you know?
Are you talking about expanding MLK? The width of MLK?
To widen it so that it's more appropriate for truck traffic. That, that is your concern, isn't it, councilmember?
Yeah, there's, there is right-of-way there that we could expand the road, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion, council?
I want to just reiterate, the reason this is exempt from the drainage ordinance is just because it's a zoning, a rezoning request.
Yes, it's zoning, so the next step is if a plat is required, they will still have to go through that, that process, and then they'll also have to do site plan and building permits, all of which would have to come back for exemption currently.
All right, council, if there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. I appreciate the work that Planning and Zoning put into this item. I know they had a lengthy discussion about that, and I appreciate them being so diligent. Council, we're moving on to item 9C. Consider action to approve the first reading of Resolution number R 2018-102 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the terms of an economic development performance agreement between the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation and 921 Bastrop LLC, approving the terms of an agreement for the construction of improvements to the lot at 921 Main Street with 921 Bastrop LLC in an amount exceeding $10,000, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing severability, providing an effective date, and move to include on the October 23, 2018 consent agenda for the second reading. Council, this is Executive Director Mike Camerlander. I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here this evening to discuss 921 Main Street project, which will rebuild 921 Main and offer first-generation space on Main Street for office and commercial uses. It will not only replace a vacant hole in downtown that's been there for quite some time, but shore up the existing walls on either side of the building, which have deteriorated over the last 15 years and are causing issues to the buildings neighboring 921 Main. The space, while new, will be built to match the other historical buildings' characteristics on Main Street to complement and enhance it as a whole. We expect the building to be completed by the end of summer 19. The Bastrop EDC Board of Directors approved a performance agreement with 921 LLC at our board meeting on September 17, which is in your packet for your, your reading. As part of the performance agreement, the EDC will provide a cash incentive of an amount of about $123,535, and that will be used to offset the cost of remediation of the lot and the relocation of certain utilities to make new building construction work on the lot. That amount added to the appraised value of the property currently is approximately $210,000, which is what the EDC's commitment is to this project, the donation of the land as well as that $123,000 to, to do the remediation. Pursuant to Section 505.158(b) of the Local Government Code, prior to us doing this deal, council must approve that expenditure of more than $10,000. This is the first reading of two. EDC has budgeted for this product, project in fiscal year 2019, and thank you for your consideration on this, this, this item. The developer, Stone Cobalt, is here tonight in the back there if you have any questions of the developer themselves. They're here to answer any questions if you have that, and I am as well.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Camerlander? Would like to bring to your attention, I'm sure you read it in the packet, that they have agreed, we've had conversation about the Main Street improvements and the sidewalk easement, anything that was needed, that's, that's agreed, that that would be a part of it, so that we'll, when we're ready to do the deal, we own the land now, they'll give us that easement. So that was included, and is a question that I've been asked before, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone. Do you have any questions for Mr. Camerlander?
I do. I just want the developer to do a brief presentation about what it is there, just give an overview of that project quick, if they could, what's going to be happening with that, the amount of space, the particulars of it. I would appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Eric Davis. I'm with Cobalt Real Estate Development. We're in a joint venture partnership with Stone Development. Mr. Guy Dudley is right over here, but I'll go ahead and tell you real quickly about the project. It's a 9,000-square-foot office-over-retail building. We do have a retail tenant with a lease to them now that is at their attorney for final review. We've agreed upon the price. We have a second-floor tenant, which I don't think's any secret that that's the EDC, that would be in the second floor and 4,500 square feet. So it's 4,500 square feet downstairs with a retail tenant, and we hope to be able to announce that retail tenant at the second reading. We believe they'll be signed up by then, and I just can't do it now because I don't have them signed up yet. The remediation on the walls, I think, is an important piece. That's leaking right now. That is a liability to the EDC, ongoing liability. It's going to cost at least $123,000 to fix that right-of-way immediately, and then I think it's going to be an ongoing problem if you don't get a building in there. Once a building goes up in there, the roof will get capped, and that drainage won't be coming down those walls anymore. In addition, you're getting leakage right now out of the foundation and into the other buildings at times, so that stops as well once you put a new slab down and so forth. This will be a building that'll be in the tradition of an older, the historic looks of downtown, a brick-fronted. Will have a second-floor balcony and a glass storefront on the ground floor. Should be a very nice addition, and yet keep with the look of downtown. And a, and a great new retail tenant downstairs, so should be a bit of a tourism draw with this, with this tenant, we believe.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Councilmember Jones, did that answer your question?
I have more questions, but not today.
Okay. I just want to clarify too, that 4,500 square feet for the EDC upstairs, we are not planning to take all 4,500 square feet. We will market it for office tenants and job creation when it's, when it's available.
I know that one of the things I'm encouraged is that it will be a building that pays property tax and generates sales tax for downtown, which is going to be a nice thing to have for our community.
Question for Mike?
Yes, sir.
As the new guy, what's the downside of this? Do you see any?
I don't. I mean, Mr. Davis said it very well. It's an ongoing problem that we're going to continue to have to pay for this remediation, and it will get costlier as it continues to rain over the years of those two walls. So it's, it's, having a downtown vacant lot is not good for downtown, it's not a good look for our downtown. This will create a great new tenant, as the mayor mentioned, more property tax, more sales tax, and we're fixing a big problem downtown that's been there for 15 years. So I, I don't see a downside to this. I think it's all upside, we can create jobs as well, so it's, it's a, it's a very good deal.
I just want to comment that in the history, the EDC took this lot off the city's hands to, to take care of the leakage problem on both those things, and this has been a venture coming off the EDC board. I mean, we've worked on this contract for some time, I've seen this many times as this contract stands, so I'm very positive that it's, it's going forward, and thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Ennis?
I'll echo, echo Councilwoman Rogers' comments. This is a journey that has taken a long time and lots of acrimony over the use, and I'm exceptionally pleased that we're reaching the end of the journey, and glad to have y'all on board and, and moving ahead.
Move to approve first reading.
I have a motion to approve from, from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Do you mind if I speak to the attorney for a minute to see if I can vote on this? I just have a quick question.
Yeah, absolutely.
like I have an ethical one, and so I'm just going to abstain. Thank you, councilmember Jones. See, secretary, was she the last vote?
No.
I lost, I thought...
Councilmember Ennis?
There we go.
Yes.
All right, so the motion passes with four yays and one abstention. So the resolution passes. Be great if we could announce at the second reading, so feel, feel free to help that happen, so. Okay, yay, let's, it is a long time coming.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to item 9D. Consider action to approve Resolution number R 2018-104 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming, confirming a board appointment of the mayor as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. I completely and totally skipped over, Andrea was on one of my list and didn't make it to my final list. It's a reappointment in the same place, Andrea Hashkey to BAIPP. There ends my presentation.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Rogers, I have a second from councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Madam Mayor, I want to acknowledge once again the time and attention that you, that you take and the efforts you put in to establish the, a fair and equitable board of commission membership, so I just wanted to go on record as saying so again.
I appreciate that. I thought you were going to go on record that I was wrong and had made a mistake, so I appreciate that that's not what we're going on record about. We'll save that for another mistake. Okay, so no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously, and we welcome Andrea back to the BAIPP board. Council, we are now going to go into executive session. We will be discussing two items. Item 10A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with the city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of the 1445 interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County for the review of subdivision applications in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And item 10B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to consult with the legal, to consult with legal counsel on a matter within the attorney-client privilege, specifically the acquisition of groundwater rights. It is 8 o'clock, we are in executive session, and God bless you, councilmember Ennis. We are now back in regular session. I'm on item number 11. Take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to execute water right acquisition documents, easements, and other related documents incident thereto in compliance with the groundwater rights agreement with Excess Water Company LLC, and all amendments thereto.
A second. I have a motion that I will not reread from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. There are no other actions with the result of the executive session. It is, we are now on item 12.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn from councilmember Peterson, a second from councilmember Jones. It is 8:22, and we are adjourned.